I'd like to call the meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the meeting today is a budget hearing. What we're going to have is a presentation by the General Manager of where we currently are in the budget, and as it is a hearing, we will, after that, open the floor up for public comments. So, barring any other comments and questions from -- and, by the way, the three other directors that aren't here had very legitimate excuses. Two are actually out of the country, and one is dealing with a personal issue. We were informed that they weren't going to be able to be here. The other thing, too, is we had some technical difficulties. This meeting will not be live streamed, but it will be recorded, so it can be watched on YouTube at a later date. JB?
All right. Good morning. Thank you for coming, and thank you for sharing your comments, concerns, and frustrations about the budget and the recommended increase in the assessment. My favorite one so far was the one who said it was just so the GM could have a nicer and bigger office. For the record, my office is just fine. There is one thing I know we can all agree on: I certainly got your attention. To start on an upbeat note, I wanted to share that since August of 2018 and through the end of December, our financial statement shows that we are operating in the black for this fiscal year. Our forecast for the year ending April 30th, 2019, is still good, such that we should finish about even, plus or minus a little in either direction. We'll have to see how we did in January and how we will do for the next three months. So, if we are doing well to budget this year, why do we need such a large increase for next year? Well, ultimately, that depends on what we -- and when I say "we," I mean all of us: the General Membership, the Board, the Committees, the General Manager, and the staff really want to accomplish. So, let me share some more. As far as the process goes, we are at a recommended budget at this point. We've been through the drafts, we've been through the proposed. Note, it is not the final version of the budget. That's up to the Board here in a couple more weeks to set the assessment and finalize the budget, so we're still not done. Budget process, again, we started back in September with the draft. We worked our way all the way up to today on February 2nd, where the Board conducts this hearing on the recommended budget, and then the Board will meet on February 16th to consider any budget amendments and vote to adopt the final budget and set the assessment and the interest rates. What do we have to accomplish? Back to my question: what's different? We have to still work on our deficit recovery, the operating fund, which consists of all the operations, the general administration, operating departments, payroll, and again, I'll drill down to all of these topics here in a moment. Drainage, labor, materials, contractual services, deferred maintenance, those items that can't be funded from the replacement capital reserve have to come out of the operating budget. Replacement capital. General replacement capital items per the reserve study schedule and other adjustments, deferred maintenance items that are in the replacement reserve and can be paid for out of that fund. Road funding. We have paving projects, we have drainage pipe replacements, and we also want to make a contribution to the road reserve, which we don't have any going in there now. The only funds that we get from the road -- to fund the road fund is our casino funds and a little bit of interest. That's it. We have bulkhead funding. And then new capital for police department expansion, the Sports Corps pool room addition, and there's one little other piece of software for the police department at $6,500. Now, for deficit recovery, the recommended budget continues to address the operating deficits of the fiscal years of '17 and '18. We had a total of approximately $1.6 million that we owe to ourselves, and at the end of the current fiscal year, we estimate that will be down to at least $1 million, as we increased the assessment last year by $71 for -- to create -- excuse me, $31 to create $600,000 for deficit recovery. The recommended strategy is cover that remaining $1 million over the next three years instead of the next four on a following scale. Basically, the $1 million that's left, putting it into threes, it's a little over a million, that's why you'll see the 337, 308, not 333. In the operating fund, we have the subsidy levels of the fee-based amenities do not increase. That's golf, aquatics, racket sports, and food and beverage. The user fees, for the most part, the fees were increased across the entire spectrum by about 3%. There's a larger number percentage increase for golf because it's going back to what they were two years ago. Payroll, that's a big one, was increased by $275,000 over the current year. There's three parts to that. If -- the biggest piece is the pay study, where we identified pay gaps for 35 different positions throughout the association. That's $128,000, that's the big piece of that. The other part is a 2% labor merit pool, so if you didn't have the -- if you took the pay study out of that, you'd see where a big difference would be. Then the 10% is an estimated increase in the medical benefit cost. We get that information from our insurance carrier. Drainage, the big topic for the association, obviously. The current year budget includes $117,000 for drainage. The recommended budget includes a total of over $900,000 for drainage. That's materials, labor, $20,000 for engineering, for planning and design, both short-term and long-term projects, $123,500 for contracted labor to begin to get at preventive maintenance and maintenance of our ditches, and then another $620,000 would come from the road reserve for major pipes under three areas of the community. Deferred maintenance includes an abundance of repair and maintenance projects that have not been addressed over the years. There's $160,000 in the operating fund, which would relate to an increase in the assessment. The other $305,000 will become another replacement capital reserve fund. Now, what are these -- what examples do I have of deferred maintenance? The one I usually go to is the guard shack over at the beach club. If you've seen that, that disaster is needing to be repaired, but it's not a capital item because it's not more than $5,000, so it's an operating piece. New capital, there's the police department software I mentioned, the Sports Corps activity room addition. It's been recommended that we borrow that from a third party as a loan and pay that back on a term of five years, such approximately 6% interest, give or take what we could get from a bank. And then the police department addition to the admin building, $400,000, there's another $400,000 out of replacement reserve for that project, recommended to borrow from the replacement reserve and pay back that to ourselves on a term of 10 years at 3% interest. Unfunded new capital projects total $225,000. These are projects that we're not going to fund. That would add another $27 to the assessment. You have all this in the sheets. If you didn't pick one up, there's some more over here on the side. You have a page in there about the replacement reserve, which gives you the estimated balance, the estimated contribution, and the total replacement. We've increased that, the estimated contribution, the second line, we've increased that by 100 and -- or recommended to increase that by $186,000. That represents $22 of the increase. These are all the replacement reserve items and projects, you'll see those. Again, these come out of the replacement reserve fund. These are -- all these things, real quickly, the explanation of it is, when we buy a -- when we replace something or we purchase something new, the following year, we contribute a portion of that amount that it costs us into the reserve fund. So, I use a simple $10,000 truck example there, just to explain this a little bit more. If we buy a truck, that's for $10,000, and we're going to depreciate -- we're going to -- excuse me. We're going to keep it in service, it has an estimated life, we're keeping it in service for 10 years. We're going to put $1,000 a year from the -- into the replacement reserve to replace that item 10 years from now. When we get 10 years down the road, is that truck going to cost us $10,000? No, it's going to cost us more than that, so we have to add a factor of inflation in addition to that $1,000, so that we have enough money to replace whatever item it is when it ends its life cycle. There's three pages of those. The road reserve. With your estimated balances there, and at the end, this is another big increase to the recommended assessment. The estimated contribution plus interest of $747,500. $400,000 of that would be new contribution from the assessment. Why? Right now, as the association, we bring in $325,000 a year from the casino funds to fund our roads. We also get a little bit of interest off of that, obviously, but we -- to do the 80-plus miles of roads that we have in the association, as well as other things that come out of the road reserve, we're going to need a lot more than $325,000 a year to make any headway on those types of projects. So, the reserve study, as well as the efforts by the Budget Finance Committee, and particularly Assistant Treasurer Jim Ringsdorf on all the reserves and calculations and whatnot, was recommended that we -- I add back in a $400,000 contribution, that we don't contribute anything to the roads now, because we will need that eventually. In the road reserve, we have $633,000 in the budget for road paving. These are the list of roads. We also have another $620,000 going for drainage pipes. The road reserve allows the funding from that reserve to be utilized for pipes that are related to drainage, particularly when it goes underneath the road. Those are at Cathel Road and Ocean Parkway, Porter Links Condominium and Muffet Way, also the engineering permitting that goes along with that, that's a chunk of change, too. The bulkhead reserve, the estimated contribution plus interest there is $846,000. You'll recall, last year, we waived the $19 per lot owner for the contribution of the bulkhead reserve. That's being added back in this year, based upon the reserve study and projections out forward for what we need to accomplish in the bulkhead program. So, there's the $19 paid by all the lots and the $465 paid by the private bulkhead lots. This is the list of bulkhead properties that we're looking to do next year. So, the proposed assessment, we started at 951 on January 4th. Proposed assessment did changes after the January -- after January 4th, and the public hearing that was on January 12th, we increased it to 982. Now, the recommended assessment is 1,078. That's a $127 increase, or 13.4%. Again, going back, all those things that I just mentioned, as we're going through there, what would the increase in the assessment be used for? So, drainage, 21; deferred maintenance, 19. These are all new spending that we don't currently pay for. That's why the recommended assessment goes up as much as it is being recommended to. The drainage, deferred maintenance, more contribution to replacement reserve, the bulkhead fee coming back in, the increase to the road reserve contribution, which we don't do any of now, new capital, fire and EMS. Payroll, went through that. Legal services, last year, we'd budgeted $75,000, we expect to increase that to 125. And then we have others, which is the net of pluses and minuses all throughout the operating budget, that don't really add up to a big amount, but the give and take from them all. So, if you start with 951, and we reduce the money that we're putting towards deficit recovery, that actually reduces the assessment by $31. The removal of the forensic audit budget, if you recall, last year, we -- remember that $400,000 for the road reserve contribution? We started right there to do that last part, putting in $225,000 in the current year budget for road reserve contribution, for depreciation of the roads. When it came time for how do we fund the forensic audit, the Board took that money and put it -- and paid for the forensic audit. So, now we have -- we do have that money to work with. But, so we reduced the assessment, and then with all these other things, it added back up to a larger amount, and the net increase was 127. Your assessment detail, you know, what do you get for your money? All of these different pieces, if you'll note that there are four particular ones: administration, public works, police, and the replacement reserve, you know, that we increased a lot. That -- those four areas count for 80% of the total assessment, not just the increase, the total assessment. That comes up to 1158, so where does the -- I don't want to cover -- so there's a graph for the -- in which you have with you, breaks all those out in a chart. There's other offset revenue that gets applied to the assessment from these areas here, that reduces that 1158 by 80, back down to the 1078, which is the 127. So, again, today, February 2nd, recommended hearing, Board will meet again in two more weeks to adopt the final budget, and with that, I'll turn it back over to the President of the Board, and he'll open the floor.
Okay, the floor is open for public comments, and as customary with any meeting, we ask that you say your name and your address, so as of now, the floor is open for public comments. Double check, make sure that mic's working. Hello, is it?
Morning, everybody. Testing, testing, okay. I might fall on it. A mic challenge. My name is Mary Deborah Wilson. I live at 142 Nottingham Lane in Section 10. I have been here -- hello? Okay. I have been here since 2011. I'm a healthcare professional and own a healthcare business in the pines, and am a resident. My comments today are not meant to diminish the hard work that has been going on in the budget to date, and I'm certainly not a budget expert, but the whole situation is fraught with rush, rush, rush. Just today is symbolic of that. We're flipping through a chart, no criticism, JB. We're out on a day that's 25 degrees, with snow on the ground, an ice layer, and we're in a room this size to discuss something that's very important. When we did the Canada's Forum, we were in the second floor of the yacht club, and there was a lot of empty space, so today we're here, and I think all of that reflects some problems in the process. The point and the counterpoint about this issue is that JB brought up an idea that we're funding new and exciting projects, which I agree, but the counterpoint is, is that we had inaccurate calculation of the reserve, and we have a proposed assessment that is the largest proposed increase in the assessment in 50 years. So, it is a lot to swallow. I'm not going to go through the particulars of the line items, because I think there is some detail that was presented today on the expenses. I still think it needs a lot more detail in order for us to really have a cogent, understandable process as far as the budget. The majority of the items are covering the reserve problem, the debt, and now $800,000 to cover drainage. I mean, it's kind of astounding. So, we need details. We need to know the how, the why, and the wherefore. The Maryland Homeowners Association law actually says that when this is presented to the members, there has to be at least 30 days before the adoption of the budget. And the decision to adopt, although we have Board of Directors up here, the decision to adopt has to be done with both the members and the Board of Directors in a special meeting. And these have been on the books since 2010. I don't know why we're not following them. When I moved here in 2011, there's a huge number of things that we were not following, according to the Maryland Homeowners Association. I emailed Marty Clark. He took the -- he took the information, and the bylaws were revised, but here again, we have problems. Also, any expenditure item which increases the assessment fee by 15% must be detailed and presented to the members in another special meeting, and these expenditures also have to be approved in a specific amendment clause to the budget. This meeting must be called in writing to the residents at least 10 days before any kind of movement forward. In 2015, the Maryland Code of Real Property, Title 11B, Maryland HOAs, there is an extensive list of items that must be included in every HOA budget. I don't know if we're in compliance with that. Like I said, I'm not a budget expert. Any violations of either of these two laws can be reported to the Office of Consumer Protection, the Maryland Attorney General. There was a comment about comparing this assessment fee to -- excuse me, to other HOAs to see how it stands in line comparatively. There was a comment that that would be difficult to do. I think it's excellent. I think it should be done. I think it definitely, we can find a cross comparison. There are 322 HOAs in the state of Maryland, and the Maryland Homeowners Association, Inc. has all the demographics, and they should be able to come up with comparable -- comparable HOAs as far as this assessment fee. I don't know why that can't happen, except that we are rushing, rush, 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 and we're not complying with the HOA laws. There's a lot of best practices online as far as HOA budget. I don't really even know if we've met to talk about that, to try to improve our process. I think that needs to be done. We can't be rushed. We have to follow the HOA laws. In closing, I think we should proceed with the debt payoff first, before we go to any new projects. We have to comply with the HOA laws. I don't want to beat that to death. This is not a blame game. I think we also need to do a schematic and a root cause analysis to figure out where we went wrong in reserve calculation. We must do that, and it must be shared with everyone so that we don't -- we don't perseverate with that or come up with the same problem all over and over again, kind of history repeats itself. So, we definitely need to do that. I don't think any of us understand that. And budget is a continuous process. It's day-to-day, month-to-month. It's not a rush job. In 2013 and 2014, we accepted the information from Pete Comsack at that the reserve funds were well-funded. Now, we sit here today, and they're not. So, please don't rush. That's all.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Hi, guys. Marty Clark, 11-191. 11-191, thanks for what you do. I'm not representing anything other than me and my capacity with stop. Stop taxing Ocean Pines today. I don't know if you've gotten this sheet, but if we look at this sheet, I'd just like to address this, if I may. We're looking at the highest increase in assessment since, well, it's been over 10 years, and it's the second highest in the history of Ocean Pines. The assessment growth, I don't believe is sustainable, and it's -- if we look at our budget, I don't have to tell you, but maybe others don't know, over 50% of it's payroll. I mean, we talk about cart barns and new pickup trucks. 50% is payroll or better. This particular budget, I -- did you just show a number of 275 increase in payroll? I was involved in the initial review of this budget back in early January. First off, the entire budget then had all the payroll in it. It had increased a dollar from one budget to the next budget, so it's not part of that 127. And it's $600,000 bucks. $600,000 payroll increase. The federal government ain't giving out that kind of money. I mean, that's nuts. We've got a report that was composed by, what company was it? Oh, our employee. That's like asking the wolf, what do we need to do to guard the hen house? I mean, that, if you cut that in half, just cut it in half, which is still too high. For 951, we should have gone back $35.50. I guess the biggest chunk of this increase really is -- and when I say increase, I think 951 was too high. Let me go on the record to say that. The drainage, 178, 2106, that was an original budget. That was in the 951. You can't put it over here and say it's increasing the 951. Am I right? Am I right? You'll have to accept -- you'll have to accept my word for it. Deferred bait maintenance, that's driving us up $127? Wrong. Deferred bait maintenance, 120 of it was in 951, so it might kick it up $3.73. We've thrown bulkheads back in. We have a staggering amount of money in the budget, or in the reserves for, for bulkheads. We could never spend it all in the next two years, but I'm not going to get into piling money into the slush fund. Road reserves, okay. Legal services, that's okay. New capital debt service, I assume that's the $200,000 building at the Sports Corps? I got a yes. Thank you. Well, while we're borrowing money at 6%, when as of today, we have $14 million, hell, we may have more in the bank than Bank of Ocean City. Again, payroll, take that $32.54 out of your increase, because it was already in there. Back to my flyer. Hey, we're up to number three: reserve balances. The budget I reviewed less than 30 days ago had a reserve contribution of around 1.6 or 7. I don't quite remember, but I have it here, if you want me to look it up in the book. The point is, if you take all depreciation in your budget book, it's $2,700,000, I think. It's not 2.9 million. I don't know how we got there. I don't know how we got from -- yeah, I do. We're basi -- is this a new name for the legacy five-year funding plan or whatever? Or is this better known in Ocean Pines as slush fund? Guys, if you take out just that increase, $900,000, which we need like a snake needs shoes, I mean, we all have our own bank accounts, that's another $106.50 of assessment dollars that we're giving you to put in a bank. Lastly, as of our last financial statement, does anybody want to guess what we had in the bank, or is a cash position? $14 million. Okay. Somebody's got to tell me why we need an increase, and I'm pretty close to the track. Thank you very much.
Other public comments?
Good afternoon. Ah, Carol Fritz, 1290 Ocean Parkway. I'm not as eloquent as Marty is with the figures, but just looking at what was presented today, I don't understand why we're borrowing, with all that money, $200,000 at 6%. It makes no sense. Also, why are we adding to what we already approved? We said we were going to do the country club necessary, riding to the police force necessary. All of a sudden, of course, the -- We're overdrawn now and borrowing 6%? I don't know where you're borrowing from.
Just to touch on a couple of things. First of all, let me say that I've watched this process take place now for 30 years and I believe this year is the most convoluted process I've seen in those 30 years. One thing I think people should realize is that the $400,000 that the general manager said that we were going to take and put into roads, that $400,000 is added into the assessment that we're going to pay. But what was not mentioned is, that's not a one-time shot. As I understand it, the board has decided to add that as a, the roads as a depreciable items. So you may agree or not agree that we need to do more road work, but if this passes as it is, we will be paying $400,000 or so in the assessment nearly every year from here to eternity unless some board changes it again. And we have not depreciated the roads for 50 years. This year, we're going to start depreciating roads and it'll go on indefinitely. Just as a point of interest, most people I talked to thought the police station addition was $400,000. We certainly need it, no question. But it came as a surprise to me, and I think they thought that because you said we were going to borrow the money, $400,000 to build it. But it came as a surprise to me that the cost is actually $800,000 to do the addition for the police station. And what it is, it's $400,000 of quote-unquote "new capital" and $400,000 of replacement reserve money. But the total is going to be $800,000. Again, as other people said, I don't know why we're borrowing money when we have money in the bank. $25,000 in debt service when we have money in the bank. Now, to me, for us to pay debt service of $25,000, that's in the assessment. We're paying that. It's not a ton of money per person, but it's $25,000. No small amount for each of us. That's the same as taking $25,000 and throwing it down a sewer because of semantics, because it's new capital. That's it. It's semantics. I don't know what changes decide to do this, but it makes no sense. I agree with the lady before me that said we don't need that $200,000 into a new daycare room. I've heard it described in different ways. It's a party room, it's a daycare room. Essentially, we're starting a new business in Ocean Pines and quite frankly, without a record of businesses, I think we ought to stay away from new businesses. We ought to take care of our old ones. Finally, this idea of loans, I'll say this. Again, I've watched Ocean Pines closely for 30 years. Ocean Pines boards have decided to borrow money either from themselves or from banks over the past 30 years. Sometimes substantial amounts of money. I believe the Sports Corps pool addition that's cost us a fortune up there was over $1 million. It was borrowed. In the end, every time a board borrowed money to try to play games with the assessment, a subsequent board paid it off every single time. Makes no sense.
Just one further comment. The rush job that I referred to, I think another element of that is that the two people that are missing, that time should have been parceled out and designated well before today so that doesn't reflect well. Number two, daycare. You talk about liability and is that for a pool area? Please don't go there.
First off, thank you for, Board for volunteering. Appreciate what you do. Oh yeah, Tom Colleton, 123 Watertown. First off, I noticed that, you know, obviously drainage is highlighted here. I think it should be a major emphasis within your, you know, within the budget. I think that is really important, particularly over where I live, over off Watertown Road. It's, we've got an issue there. So I think that's where we need to emphasize, however we're spending our money, I think we need to look at that. The OPA employment, that really stuck out to me. I mean, I heard 50%. I don't know if that's what it is, but it's clearly a huge part of the budget. I think it's too high. I think we really need to look at contracts. I think, you know, and if you have that much of the budget devoted to employment, to employees, it's just going to grow. And it's never going to, it's going to be a burden. It's like a, you know, it's really going to hamstring how this organization works. So I really think we need to rethink that. I think a lot of things can be, everybody here likes to use the term outsourced, but I think you can utilize contracts to a much greater extent and they should be. Because I don't, because we start building all sorts of capital costs and then all these associated employment costs that just increase every year. I deal with this in my job right now. I'm, you know, and it's, and so we're always cognizant of that. The debt and the audit. I still don't think we have closure on that. It's very important. This is my biggest concern. I would like to hear more about what has happened. The issues that were highlighted from this indicate a lack of internal controls and I don't think the board or the general manager appreciates how important these are in the business world, in accounting and in financial procedures and policies. These are, you know, how you're managing your money and all the little hoops that you've got to jump through, which sometimes seem very annoying to people in that particular business, you know, like, oh gosh, you gotta get this approval for this or that. But all have a purpose and a place. And I don't think you all appreciate how important these are and we haven't heard back on that audit. Because it sounds like it's $1.5 million and this is what's created this huge problem. And to me, the problem's not going to go away unless you get it fixed. And then, just a little side note, I saw the color copier. Nowadays, most folks are, the copiers, printers are all kind of linked together in the IT world, so just a little thing. You know, your IT guy could catch that. So anyway, thank you very much.
My name is Jerry Gary. I live at 5 Canal Road in Ocean Pines. I'm just a regular homeowner and I have a problem understanding how we can be so far apart on these two things. And it brings to mind that old Mark Twain saying, lies, damn lies, and statistics. And I think these numbers are being massaged to come across with a point of view that does not represent the community at all. That's one. The other thing that I don't understand was the $900,000, if I read it wrong, on doing the ditches. I just went down to the Parks Department and talked to, attempted to talk to Mr. Wells to see if he could give me an understanding of where the problems that related to the ditches and why that money was coming up. I never got a chance to. He was a very busy man. I stopped in there three times, left messages and nobody returned my phone calls. But I would like to have somebody, at least the people that are going to be doing this installation or recommendation on the ditches, to show me how you came up with the numbers. Because I don't understand it. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was the, God, I have, I've got a brain fart here. I can't remember now. The problem that, I don't know. Give me a second, I'll come back and talk to you, okay?
Other public comments?
Hello, my name is Jim Digger's. I live at 2 Cape May in the Park. I'm a non-practicing CPA and I've only lived in the Ocean Pine development for about two years. So I'm not familiar with the numbers. But when I look at this, one thing it does tell me real quick is not necessarily this board, but past board have misled this community drastically by these reserve adjustments. I can say by looking at these numbers that maybe not this board, but previous boards have misled this community based on the amount of reserve adjustments we're putting in here. That $400,000, almost 40% of the increase, that means somebody screwed up. Somebody, you know, and I know in the Park, by the way, I'm the treasurer of the Park, we use Miller-Dotson and so everything, we were well-reserved to avoid these kind of increases we're seeing in this budget here. That's one comment. The other one I have is on payroll. I noticed there was a gap study, which was 127,000, something like that. My understanding is that we still pay 100% of employee benefits. I can tell you my whole four years as a CPA, I've never seen a company, well, take it back, maybe back in the 70s and 80s, that I see we pay 100%. And so when you're saying there's a 10% increase and it's $27,000, $27,000, I mean, you're talking about $270,000 of benefits, then I think there's some trimming that can be done there. And that's the two comments I have.
Other public comments?
Oh, excuse me. I did remember what I wanted to say. Okay. I think there's a difference here between needs and wants. What I see in this community is three things that really need to be done right now. One of them is to take care of the police station down there. Our chief has been homeless together with duct tape and string and we need to take care of the people that take care of us. Two, that includes the fire department. Safety should be our major concern. So the chief, police department, they should be getting raises too. We keep losing our good, our people that he trains to other law enforcement that picks them up with better salaries. So anything that's concerning the police department or the fire department and helping them, I'm all for and I'll be glad to pay any kind of thing on my budget for that. The third thing that I wanted to talk to is about the maintenance on this thing. And I don't see how Ocean Pines is taking care of its ownership. Those are the three things. Dick, clean the ditches, take care of our police force and take care of our fire department. We do that, we're home free. That's the needs, okay? The wants are desires that we'd like to have down the road. And I think a little common sense by the people that I voted for on this board who are supposed to be fiscally responsible should show the way. Thank you.
Other public, excuse me, other public comments?
My name is Cynthia Bartolomeo. I'm at 35 Camelot. Everybody that's been up here so far has already voiced most of my concerns, but one thing that I feel like I never got an answer for, because every time I feel like I get an answer, it's a no answer. There was money missing. And I know, where did it go? Who took it? And why aren't they behind bars? And get the money back.
Other public comments?
Yeah, I'm Larry Perone, 19 Clipper Court. And basically, I just wanted to address the gentleman's comments on the fire department. I happen to be on the Budget Finance Committee and I'm the liaison with the fire department. And just so you understand, when we went through the budgeting process with the fire department, we basically gave them everything they asked for and it did include, and we did have discussions about retention of the people in the fire department. So if your concern is about us not taking care of the fire department, we're taking care of the fire department. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kim Gorsage, 6 Crossbow. I'm new to the community. We've only been here since 2017 and the one thing I want to point out is word of mouth through the community outside of Ocean Pines is, don't buy in here because of our fees. I have friends that are in West Ocean City and that was our fees. You have to look at our assessments along with our taxes. We get nothing for our assessment. It's community cleanup, we talk about the golf courses, fixing, you know, the yacht club and all that. We don't benefit from any of that, yet we pay. Well, I'm almost up at $2,400 between my assessment and taxes and I get no benefit from it. This is my second home. At my home, my taxes are $2,600. I pay for police, I pay for all that, it's all in there. If you want to increase our fees, give us homeowners some kind of benefit. Give us something for it. I don't know a lot with the budget because I haven't, you know, like I said, this is all new to me. This is my first meeting. I will say you have to take care of the community drainage. You drive around, you ride your bike, it's, I think our community looks run down because of all the standing water. That, you're not going to pull new homeowners in when they come in to look and you've got water sitting around. I would never buy in here again without looking at that first because that's a huge issue. As I said, the word of mouth. I think, you know, when you have people around Ocean City and West Ocean City that look at us and say our fees between what we pay trash and everything, we're above a lot of places around for nothing benefit from it. No new projects, no putting a daycare center or in the pool until you take care of the issues that need to be taken care of. And as far as benefits, I did not know that, but 100% of benefits being paid, that needs to stop. There's, I pay a lot of money for benefits. I have a very high deductible and I feel that they, employees need to pay something towards their benefits. And I believe that that's all. And I just want to say, as a homeowner association, I don't know whether there's a committee or someone on there that rides around to look at some of the homes. Some of these homes look like foreclosures. We need to have a, you know, find them, start making money that way, make them clean up their properties. Just down the street from me, there's a house that's so overgrown, you can hardly see their driveway. Get, clean this community up and then let's worry about fixing a golf course to pull people in, you know, that we're not, unless we pay, we don't benefit from. So, thank you.
Tom Terry, 401 Blue Water Court. I have to ask us to take a step back for a moment in history and go back to August of 2016. In August of 2016, this organization had no deficit. It was in the black. Within days of the announcement of that at the annual meeting, major decisions were made to go in a different direction of how this place was going to be managed. For the next year and a half, we saw absolute mayhem. I'm sorry, but our president and not these guys, there's one absent member here today that was a part of that team that made that decision. But let's understand something. When you lose $1.6 million because of the actions you took, you can't expect these folks to not have to recognize the loss and the mayhem that came from that.
to not have to recognize the loss and the mayhem that came from that. They have tried for two years now to try to hold down some of the dues. They have tried very hard to do that. So I just, I'd something, someone finally had to say that in public, that we ended up with a mess for a year and a half that these folks are trying to dig our way out of. Now whether or not you ought to have a daycare center or not, that's up to you folks and others, not me. I do agree you shouldn't borrow the money. That I do agree with. We self-funded the yacht club and paid it back in three and a half years to ourselves. As far as the reserve study and someone being misled, well, in ways I do agree with that comment, because there were people who didn't want that reserve study to be finished. And you want to know why? Because the reserve study was going to say we needed more money. And they knew it. People in control, people in positions of authority. We started that reserve study when I still had two years left on the board. It barely is finished now. So let's understand, folks, sometimes things do go on that shouldn't happen. And when a reserve study is done, all I ever said when I was on the board is let's have a study of how much reserves we ought to have. And whatever that reserve study says, let's go do it. That's all I ever said. And it took years for that reserve study to finally be finished. There was a comment referring to the audit as if it is connected to a $1.6 million loss. The audit has nothing to do with the way this place was run for a year and a half. This place was run horribly for a year and a half, completely out of control. Half a million dollars being spent on the first floor of a building that may now have to be razed. I'm sorry, there were decisions that just weren't right and it wasn't these people who inherited that. As far as the roads, it's absolutely correct. We didn't put reserve, we didn't put money in depreciation into the budget for roads. You don't want why? Because Ocean Pines used to get a half a million dollars a year from the state until Annapolis decided to keep the money, which they did years ago. Then we got the casino money, which is about maybe a little over half of what we used to get from the state for our roads, and then we had to take that money to pay for an audit. Why? Because somebody stole millions of dollars? No. We're spending a lot of money on an audit that is, in my personal opinion, a smokescreen for covering up how badly this place was run for a year and a half to two years. We have $14 million in the bank, that is probably true, but how much of that is operating dollars that are set aside every single year? When I was on the board, there would be this chart put in the newspaper of how much money Ocean Pines had. And everybody who knew what they were talking about knows that those dollars were all of the dues that had just been collected from everybody. So I'm not saying we don't have money. We certainly do, and it's a good thing that we do. But folks, these people sitting up here are trying to find a way out of a mess, out of a swamp. And I'm not saying they're doing a perfect job. I didn't do a perfect job. I sat there for six years, trust me, I screwed up. I made mistakes, just like anybody did. But these are honest, reasonable numbers. This is part of a process of where if the community doesn't want a daycare center, then don't build it. If the community doesn't want their roads to be fixed. But the comment that was made that we get nothing out of our dues? Nothing? The folks in Berlin pay more taxes than we pay in fees. Ladies and gentlemen, they don't have anywhere near the amenities or the facilities or the number of roads or the number of parks or the number of lakes or anything else. This is a very, very large, complicated HOA in a community that is, does in fact draw people. Just ask people in the real estate business how things have been going over the last year. People are investing in this place all the time. Now, the one thing that does exist, and if somebody can find a solution to this, I'm all for paying for it. But I sat there for six years and no one could answer the question of how do you handle the drainage of a community that is at, virtually at sea level? How do you do that? If we can get the answer, part of it is cleaning out the ditches, there's no doubt about that. I absolutely agree. We were, I was on the team that bought the equipment and put the dedicated team in place, the first one. Maybe we need two or three teams like that. That may very well be. But ladies and gentlemen, we are trying to find our way back from an absolute disaster in this community. And I will close with again, in August of 2016, this organization was out of deficit and within a year and a half, actions had been taken and direction had been set to put us a million six in debt. Let's not blame these folks, there's only one of them left up there that did that and he didn't show up today. Thank you.
Other public comments?
My name is Jeff Nepper, I live on Carrollton Lane. I want to talk to you about this thing that we've developed of borrowing from ourselves. This is close to the dumbest idea I think I've ever seen. I know why it's done, and I don't like it. I strongly encourage you to set up a reserve for new capital. Right now, the situation exists where if it's a replacement, we have a reserve. Reserves don't hit assessments directly. They do for the contribution, but not for the individual expenditures. If it's new capital, whoa, we don't have a reserve for that, so guess what? It hits the assessment. You have just set up an automatic argument every time you want to do anything. Because if you bias it one way, if you can stretch it and call it replacement, oh, you're the hero, it doesn't hit reserves. If you do it the other way, uh-oh, it does. Guess what? Your people, you're going to respond to that, so is the community. We're going to look at that stuff and we will forever. I, I can't tell you how many hours we've spent, and I've listened to most of them, talking about the difference between this and that, and at the root of it is, we do or we do not want to affect the assessment. So let's get over that. Let us set up a reserve for new capital. Let's appropriately fund it, and we don't have to fund it all instantly day one, we can have a plan if we want to do it over time. But then we will take away this idiot argument about assessments that don't affect, things that don't affect the assessments and things that do, and we'll take that away. And we'll also, I believe, we should at the same time, take a position that says we are not going to play this game of borrowing from ourself. It makes no sense. Look at it today. We're proposing to do it for two different things. The rate on one is 6%, the rate on one is 3%. Same organization, slightly different departments, and 100% difference in rate. How does that, my dog can get a better rate than that. So, so we need to stop doing some of these things, I think, to bias the transactions for and against assessments. Okay? I'm not a giant fan of assessments going up and up and up and up. On the other hand, we got to pay for what we want to do. Let's have the argument about what we want to do and not an argument about whether it hits assessments or not. That's the wrong thing, I think, to be focusing on. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Yeah, just briefly, this issue of a reserve study that was mentioned, like everything, you can say things that sound good and it's easy to do that, but it should be pointed out, we spent a fair amount of money on that reserve study. I'm not even sure how much we're using it at this point, but the important thing is, it was said that we had the reserve study, and when the reserve study was done, we should fund the reserve to the amount that we should have by the reserve study. Now here's the facts. When that reserve study was finished, it said we should have $18 million in reserves when it was done the first time. It's been changed since. The first time, the guy said we needed $18 million. We normally have about $4 million or so at the end of the year, whatever, give or take. So that reserve study, if initiated at the time it was completed for $18 million, would mean that we would have to collect another $14 million from association members. That's all been changed now because everybody said that's crazy. And then the guy who did the reserve study said, yeah, I agree with you, that's crazy. So it's all politics. We bend the numbers to suit the need. That's the point.
Hi, I'm Ann O'Connell, 77 Ocean Parkway. I think we found ourselves in a hole, and I think we need to quit digging. And I think we need to resolve all of the unfinished business before we undertake anything new. We don't need a daycare prior to taking care of our debt. We don't need windshades on the tennis courts prior to take care, prior to taking care of our debt. We don't need a sunshade over pickleball courts, tennis courts, or anything like that prior to resolving our debt. And so I think, quit digging, let's get out of this hole and see if we can't deal with attracting new residents to the pines after we resolve the problems we have here. Our reputation precedes us here. People know what kind of trouble we're in money-wise. People don't want to come in here looking to buy. And a lot of the people that did come here and bought a property did not count on this escalation of the cost of living here.
Other public comments?
How you doing? My name is Jerry Luters, live at 109 Bramblewood Drive. I just moved here in April, so I'm not familiar with all the history and all of what's going on. Recently retired this past September from the federal government, and I hadn't gotten the pay raise in six or seven years at the federal government. So we're not getting all the money at the federal government. But anyhow, my personal opinion is, we should do what's required to protect property values in the pines. We should get out of debt and limit any new capital investment so that when we start going black and we have the money to spend, then we should start picking those projects off one at a time after that. But you got to protect property value and you got to clean up these neighborhoods. And part of cleaning up the neighborhoods is having property owners clean out their ditches, fix their yards, fix their houses, do, do what they need to do. Property values are number one. If you protect property values, people will move here. Okay? That's it. Thanks.
Other public comments?
Yeah, I'm Paul DeLonge from 7 Morning Miss Drive. The only big issues I have watching newspaper, because I just permanently moved down here now, I had a home for seven years and remodeled it and everything, of the capital projects that yous do, because I've been in business a long time, is terrible. The yacht club went from a building, we built a beautiful building, all of a sudden they said, now we, huh, we forgot, what's the cook gonna cook on? We got to redo that. That wasn't in the budget. All of a sudden, that was in the budget though, we had to do something. So that came about. Now, we have the golf course. We remodeled the bottom, huh, second floor. What are we gonna do? So now, what's that budget? It escalated. Now they want to tear it down, I don't have a problem with that. But the money that you stuck in the bottom, I'm going to give everybody 50 bucks, because that's what you did. You did that. You just pissed it down the river. And it's a shame. It is really a shame. Because majority of the time, when these capital budgets come up, there's people that are making decisions that shouldn't be making decisions, because they have no clue. They really don't. And I'm not taking away from you gentlemen and ladies, I'm not. I don't believe in that. But when you do capitals, you have to get people involved. And not just certain contractors that we all pick. That's no good either. It's conflict of interest. Now, we come to the most important part here, police department. The police department has been here since what, sir? How many years?
Well, it was, we had private security to start with, Matt's part of the resolution development to start.
Okay, so you're here 30 years?
We've had security from day one.
But I'm saying police, of our police department. Anybody know?
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years. 30 years. 30 years. So, and I, I really applaud this gentleman. Over 30 years, what has crime done? It went like this. His paperwork didn't go down, it went up. Nobody looked at him. Now all of a sudden, now it comes up, now we have, oh, Jesus, we have a police department, now we got to build $800,000 worth of, whatever it may be, sir. It's great. But the thing is, what we're forgetting here as an association, there is depreciation in everything, and we do not look at that. And now all of a sudden, all the dollars have come here, and we're saying we need $127 more out of a pocket. But, we got to be managing it correctly. Every year, something should be put away for this, this, this. Not just saying, okay, now we're just going to go borrow money and do this and do that. It's not fair, people. It's not fair. I know all of yous have a home in here. Do you wait till the last minute, oh, the roof was shot five years ago? Now I got water in my bed. Is that what yous do? Maybe yous do, I don't know. Because I see a lot of homes in here that need to be addressed. I bought my home, it was a mess. And I bought it, I put a lot of money in it, probably too much money for this development. Too much money. And my assessments are going up, my property values are not going up. And like the other lady just said, she just moved here, and there's a lot of talk out in the town, nobody wants to buy in here, because of all the hate and discontent. We see it in the paper every week. Every week, it's bad. Come on, people, let's get together here. This is our community. Let's make the community better. You know? That's all I got to say, people. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Hello, my name is Greg Shahidi, I live at 165 Nottingham Lane. You know, first of all, I want to say that I, I think it's hard, I'm a simple person, like I don't know, I'm not a CPA, I didn't work in business for years, I didn't own my own business, but to me, I just have questions. Like honestly, the $127 isn't going to kill me. It's not. It's $96 a month, whatever. I write it once a year, it's over with. I mean, I know a lot of people don't like to hear that, but it is what it is. My problem with it is, what's going to be done with the money? You know, I want specifics. I don't understand why it's costing so much to clean out, like the, one of the major points to me is the ditches, because I happen to live next to one of the major ditches. Not the ones that go in front of everybody's driveway, but the big one, that all those driveways drain into. It's on my property line. I'm not allowed to build a fence close to that, but that's a whole nother issue, I get it. Like we can't have people putting up 30-foot fences in front of their houses. But there's, you know, there's trash and debris. But there's, you know, there's trash and debris and it's not draining and it's mosquitoes and I have a two-year-old daughter that could stumble into it because it's got a foot of water in it year-round, rain or no rain. I don't know, I don't even know where the water's coming from, because it won't rain and it'll still be full of water. You know, I don't know if we're hiring outside companies, we have a public works department who gets a salary that they're apparently gonna get an increase to, and then, you know, they have the equipment, I'm gonna assume, to go in there and clean it. I don't expect it to be done in a month, that's not reasonable. But, you know, there should be a regular maintenance schedule where these guys have the time. I see them riding down my street in the trucks, you know, they're doing something. They're doing something. It doesn't take long. I could probably go out there with a garden rake that I can get from Home Depot and clean it out in like, an hour, myself. I do. Do you have something to say? Because you've been talking the whole time. All right, well, come on. While I'm on the microphone, show some respect.
Excuse me. The quorum, opinions are welcome. Anybody else, outside of that, you leave. Continue.
You know, as far as the other stuff, it's good to see the budget. God bless the police department, we have the safest neighborhood in the state of Maryland, generally every year. God bless them. You know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I don't even feel the need to lock my car or my door in my house. You know, honestly. My mother can't fathom it, I grew up on the Western Shore. Yeah, I mean, my mother can't fathom it. She's like, "What's going on?" I'm like, "Whatever." You know? It's just tough for me and I don't mean this to sound wrong or insulting, but, you know, I just bought here two years ago, I plan on raising my family here, I'm not going back to the Western Shore. I love the Eastern Shore, I love everything we have here, I love this neighborhood, I really do. But it's tough for me to wrap my head around like, the basic numbers that, you know, as a community member, I only pay $2 less than somebody that doesn't live here to go to the swimming pool. That I have to pay $600 a season to use a pool, that they say, "Oh, you have five pools." No, we have one year-round pool. We have one. You know, it just sounds unreasonable to me. Why can't, you know, an outside community, somebody outside of the community should be paying considerably more to use our amenities than we are. Not $2. You know, I don't buy a pool membership because it's too much money. You know? I have a two-year-old daughter, I took to the pool the other day, she loves it. I just pay the six bucks, I believe it is, or $8 and the non-member pays 10, I can't even remember. It just seems, just seems a little crazy to me. I don't know, I don't really have much else to say other than that. I just want details, I want to understand a plan, you know? When, I grew up in the restaurant business, I'm still in the restaurant business, if I spend money, my boss wants to know, "Where did that money go?" You know, okay, I bought this, I bought that, we had to do this, we had to do that. You know, you want almost, I think the budget said $173,000 is gonna go towards drainage ditch, I believe is what it said. Okay, where is that being spent? You know, because you also have an increase in pay to the people that were already paying, right? That should be doing it, in my opinion. Who's that $173,000 going to? Are we hiring an outside company? I just want to know. That's all. And, you know, like I said, the $127, it's not a big deal to me, but it's like letting somebody steal a dollar from you, but then giving them your debit card to go buy something, you know? Like, a dollar's not a lot of money, but I'm not gonna trust you for much longer, like ever again. And, you know, I'm gonna be here for a long time. There's a lot of retirees here and I love that. It makes our community safer, I believe. But somebody else made a great point. There's a few houses on just my street, you know, like when I walk my daughter, that look like junkyards. And, I don't know what's supposed to happen, I'm pretty sure you're supposed to have a lien against your property, and I'm pretty sure those people are not paying their dues, I would imagine, you know? I just don't get it. I paint my house, I cut my grass, I clean my ditches, my home looks nice when you look at it. And then, I walk my daughter past a house that has broken down cars and motorcycles and, you know, it looks, it's a joke. And, paid too much money to live here for my property value to go down. Thank you.
Other public comments?
David Manning, I live at 101 Mumpsford Landing. Blue collar, not blue blood, don't understand it. 13% inflation's not there. All these things everybody's talking about, I understand. I get a redundant Carrollton from your Colonial Village. You people do nothing for me. My postal hub is down the street. So I have an additional $50 that I have to, or no, I've been fighting you guys for, since day one, because it was never there in 2000. Originally, my fees used to be what the docs are, or whatever here, the $465. Now they're $1,000. Like I said, I'm blue collar, not blue blood. I clean my ditches, I clean common areas, whatever. I try to make it presentable and all that. I don't get any help, I don't ask for it, I'm not looking for it. It's time we all come together and have a Rodney King moment, because this is bull, it's juvenile. And, I, my money's fixed. It's not going up. You're gonna drive me out of this community. I love Maryland. I love seeing the blue herons come in the back, the wetland, the non-titled wetland behind my house, which is crazy. The shutdowns for culvert pipes that weren't there yet, I don't know nothing. And we went to special critical lands and they missed it. But I'm the one who pays, I don't know, I don't get it no more. It used to be simple in the 50s, 60s, common sense and logic took place, or people, you know, they could unite and talk and you should use people's, you know, what they know, their knowledge, and not abscond them, whatever. You know, I didn't mean to get curt with you, young whoever was here prior, but I'm mad as hell and I can't take it no more. You know, and I mean, that was a movie back in the 70s. And that's, that's all I can say, you know? And I don't think we're, you know, that bad off, you know? But I don't think we need a $147 increase. I think we should be able to maintain with what we have now. I mean, houses have reverted back, those houses that sold on Carrollton, that's the same numbers they were back in 2008. I mean, so, what were the dues back then? Why aren't they there? They've inflated ridiculously. I'm just a dumb carpenter though, and that's all I got to say. Thank you for listening.
Other public comments?
Good morning, good afternoon, whatever time it is. Audra Spoluski, 12 Sandy Hook. First, I'd like to thank you all for putting together this presentation. I think what the general manager has done in terms of laying it out on a cost basis, you know, so we can see per person what it's going to cost us, I think that's very helpful for us to understand. With that said, I think everyone has brought up a lot of the points I had, so hopefully these are a few new ones. With the increase, I haven't heard anyone talk about what our collection rate is for our assessment fees. I would be very curious to know how many people don't pay, what we're not collecting, but yet we want to increase our assessments by 13%. Is that going to increase more of a problem rather than help us? Certainly, this community, as my understanding, was built, you know, for retirees initially in the beginning. If we're, you know, our population is a large senior population, perhaps we're on fixed incomes and we can't necessarily afford the increase. So I think we really have to understand what our collection rate is and if we're not meeting a certain level, we have to take measures to do so. And if that means leaning people's properties, that's what you have to do. Another point I'd make out, someone said they were okay with the increase in legal fees. That would infer to me that you're going to continue to have the legal fees budgeted at $125,000 per year. I'd ask why we have a homeowner pointing out the laws of Maryland to us and homeowner association laws rather than perhaps whomever the attorney is that you're working with. So for an increase in legal fees, let's make sure that you all are getting the support and the proper legal advice that you need. In terms of the increase in payroll and benefits, just my personal opinion, I do feel that people deserve raises based on merit. I'm glad to see that it is supposedly a merit-based raise. However, in regards to benefits, I would simply ask the question, who is your insurance broker and what are they doing for you? They should be coming to you every year with such a large organization to discuss what's happening in the benefit marketplace. You should be questioning why they're going up. It does happen, premiums are through the roof with health insurance, so I get that, but there's ways that you can hopefully mitigate that. It could be through your broker, it could be through your carrier, it could be through employees paying a portion of their healthcare, which is, you know, the norm nowadays. Very, very few businesses can afford to fund 100% of medical costs. You know, look into being self-insured, if that's a possibility. I've read where you've also had some issues just with your property and casualty insurances. If you don't have a good broker who's helping you look into all of this, I think it's definitely time to put that at the top of your priority list, to make sure that somebody's working for you. Don't forget, all of these folks are working for you. Your lawyer, your insurance broker, anybody that you're paying as an outside service, you're the client. They should be helping you make these best decisions for the homeowners association. And just a comment as far as maintenance goes, some folks were talking about cleaning out the ditches and the drains and things like that. I don't profess to know how the public works department is managed, nor do I mean to disrespect them in any way. However, when I see five public works employees picking up leaves from a ditch, from the side of the road, I have to wonder, how many public employees, public works employees does that leave left to do other things? In my neighborhood, the leaves were picked up very late in the season. I'm sure there were other priorities, I get that, but what it did was, it damaged the grass, you know, in front of our home, in front of where our ditch is, so that it's dead now, because the leaves sat there for so long, because we had them out at the appropriate time. Who knows if that'll come back? So everyone talks about the way properties look and this and that. That's not my fault, I did nothing to create that unpleasantness, you know, I don't know if it'll come back. But to see five people, three guys in a pickup truck and two guys in a leaf truck with the leaf box, you know, is very small for a development like this, I don't know why it's so small. But I just bring that up because I think obviously their time could be better served, you know, elsewhere and perhaps spread out. So, thank you very much.
Other public comments?
I have two questions. Number one, because it's come up a couple, I'm Ann O'Connell, 77 Ocean Parkway. Because it's come up a couple times, are the benefits fully covered? Are employees fully covered for their benefits? Okay, what's the percentage?
I can tell you, as of last year, it was approximately 80/20 on the family portion of it and it was 100% on the individual. I believe the new budget is set up going forward, that it'll go 80/20 for everybody across the board and that also includes directors and others that had full benefits going. So we're moving, as we said last year, we're moved, we got rid of the two, there were two HRA programs that were high benefits, we eliminated both of those, which brought, I think approximately, Steve, $100,000 plus in savings to the association in this current budget year we're running through. And part of going forward, the second phase of this, was to go to 80/20. So, that's where we're headed going forward, so.
Okay, also, there's been a lot of buzz on Facebook in particular about employees getting a free assessments package, like they don't pay for their golfing, they don't pay for swimming, they don't pay things that we're all expected to pay. I'd like to know what the truth of that is.
I don't have all the details, but I'm sure JB can get back to you on all of that, or if you know it now.
It used to be that they would get 50% off on food and beverage, that's been eliminated.
But what is it now?
Usually...
Not what it used to be, what is it now?
Okay. There's nothing on the food and beverage. The employees, excuse me, the employees who work at the golf course, do you get a break on playing?
As in free, or no?
Usually free, when you work, and that's not just free, that's pretty much, pretty much any golf court, if you're working at a golf course, you're getting some free benefits off of that.
Well, I don't know about explaining it away, I'm just asking what the truth is.
Right.
Because I've heard a lot, and the swimming pools?
I'm not sure about pools.
Go back and check, I think we owe an answer.
Yeah.
So, the best way to handle it, if you don't mind, if you could send an email to the general manager and ccdirectors@oceanpines.org.
And does everybody get that when I send that?
Yes, if you sent it to directors at oceanpines.org, they'll all get it.
Because I did send an extensive email.
Right. And so, and that way, you know, he can provide the answer for you.
Okay.
The employees that work any particular amenity get some free benefits for working there.
But it's not policy that all employees throughout, throughout the pines?
There's the camps here, in parks and recreation, they do get that benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comments?
Hi, I'm Patty Gilhany, I live at 69 Abbeyshire and I've been here since 95. My husband's family's original lot owners in Ocean Pines. Anyways, going back to what you just answered about the employees and what their benefit package is, my son worked for the beach club and he worked for the yacht club. He worked there from the time he was 14-years-old until he was about 25. And they were given a swim package, not only was he given a card, he was also allotted to take a guest. This was as recent as three years ago, working under Linda at the beach club. So, if every employee in this office or in this group can have a free pass to go to the swim, the pool things, let's say you have 100 employees. Now, those 100 employees can go ahead and take another 100 of their friends with them, anytime. Because it's not only your employee package, it's a pass also for a guest to come with them for free. So, whoever doesn't know about that, just wake up and start realizing what you're giving away. You're giving a lot more away. And to sit there and say that, somebody from Bishopville can walk in this office and buy a pass to go to the pool and spend 60 to $120 more a year than what I would spend as an owner to go use these pools? Who is maintenance-ing it? We are. Is Mr. Bishopville maintenance-ing it? Hell no. He's just driving down the road, using everything we have here. If you're gonna open the place up to the public, open the whole place and get a real company in to run it, and I'm not being upset about the fact that you all are trying to do and recover what you can, but guess what? The reality is, is we're in so much trouble. I'm a real estate agent in Ocean City, believe me. The one thing that I hear every day in my office, Ocean Pines, no. Hell no. We don't want nothing to do with that. You know why? Because every newspaper, this week, go pull the Dispatch, go pull the Daily Times, go pull Ocean City Today, right on the front page. It's so sad. This was such a great community at one point. We are now like, the laugh of town. It really is unfortunate. I just wish that we would turn around, think twice. I'm so excited to hear somebody actually looked up homeowners association information. 30 days, you got 30 days, not two weeks.
Other public comments?
I just want to add something about ditch cleaning up. I do pull my leaves from the ditch to the road, I did, they came through, they got them. I was back in town, did it again, because I was told it would be done until it's completed. My leaves are still sitting there. So when the snow melts, I have to bag them up like I do the rest of my yard. So as far as, I don't know what maintenance, like they said about the leaf pickup, but it said until it's done. Last year, it never was done on my street. We came back several times and ended up having to bag them up myself. So, if I'm paying public works for that, then you need to, it needs to be done. And then, I think that's all. Thank you. I have one more call.
Joe Reynolds, again, one more thought. There's been talk here about debt and I don't know, people may be fearful that we owe people money. We don't owe anybody a penny. I don't believe we have any debt, we have zero debt. We're one of the most financially secure communities in the entire state of Maryland. The only debt we have is money we may owe ourselves, it's a deficit, it's not debt, we don't owe it to anybody. And we could pay off that deficit tomorrow out of our reserves. We're not short on money. We don't have any debt, so let's not get all this, all upset about, my God, the world is cave upset about, my God, the world is caving in here. We don't owe anybody any money, I don't think. Am I wrong? Doug, you're the president, do we owe anybody any money?
No, we owe ourselves.
Right, thank you.
I remembered my thought. The general manager, you guys said that he would get back, that is a buzz on Facebook that you do not get back. So I just want to make that point, that if you guys say, the vice president was very quick to respond to my email, and I thank you for that, but the buzz is, when they run into the general manager and he says, well, he didn't know, he'll get back, or whatever, that people in the community are talking that there is no response, months and months later, so I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Hi, Carl Walensky, 42 Boatswain. In reference to the young lady we just spoke, who said that, about the assessments and what we get for them. I've lived here since 2004, built a house in 2002, I live in Harbor Village, so I, I pay an increased rate for being on the water, but I have already replaced my own bulkhead at my cost, I'm quite uncertain how that works with that particular division. The assessments, everybody just got their assessments in, we know, all know that the assessments for the, for the state just went up, which is great, right? My property must be valued at higher, higher value. So that's going up. I think, I try and think about what I get for my HOA dues, because I'm, like somebody mentioned here, if I go to the pool, I pay as I go. I don't buy any of the membership, same with the golf, and I use both occasionally. I gotta, this is a problem that doesn't happen much, I'm just curious what my expectation should be. Snow removal. We have it today. Not a plow has been dragged through my section of the neighborhood, and it probably won't because the temperatures are warming up and we're going to count on that. It's a har, it's hardly a problem that ever happens here, right? We don't get that much snow, but I remember we had a cold snap last year for about 15 days. We had ice on my streets for two weeks, compacted, down, slippery streets, walking out there, walking the dog, cars sliding around. I think they might have dragged a plow over it once, never cinder it. I'm a side street over in Harbor Village, I'm just curious, what, what should the expectation be? Because when I look at my assessments, and you guys want to raise them by a certain amount, I, I think that the snow removal is probably the main thing that I get out of it. The police force, and the fire department, and the snow removal, and I'm just curious, what should the expectation be?
What'd he say?
Wait till Monday.
Yeah, yeah, wait, wait till Monday.
If anyone remembers, the person that just came on the radio about three days ago and said the best place in Maryland to live is Ocean Pines, by far. So if you remember who that radio station was, I'd like to know it, because listening to this place, my God, it makes this the worst place in the world to live. But one thing for sure, the people that don't like, I'm gonna tell you where I don't, where I live, you don't like my yard, don't go buy it, and don't put your dog in my yard messing on it. So I'd say, all you people that want these yards to be cleaned up, get a group of people, 60 or 70, go around Ocean Pines, clean up everybody's yard. You clean up my yard, I don't mind, just don't get hurt and sue me. Because I don't keep health insurance, and I don't keep property insurance. It's stupid, I live there 20 years, why in the hell would I pay all that money for insurance? You want to clean up my yard? Okay. Did anybody hear that, where Ocean Pines is the best place in Maryland to live?
Other public comments?
I'm Faith Stanley, I live on Driftwood, Section 1, and I understand, I'm talking about assessments, which concerns everybody. I understand about inflation, I think we do need a little increase in increments, but not as big as we have, especially for people that have retired, single people, not excluding the younger people too, but I find that it's really a difficult situation and a hardship for a lot of the older people. And for the big increase that there is, 100-some dollars, 120 dollars, whatever, it's too much to handle. It's got to be cut down, and for the $30, $31 increase for this year, we could cut it down a little bit. All our costs, I understand, we've got to pay for some things, but take the necessary things, absolutely necessary things, and pay them off first, before we do anything with any kind of nice amenity, or something that's not quite as necessary, and just work from there. I think we have enough money between the reserves, investments, wherever, get it from there, not from us, who've been paying all these years. I've been here 19 years near, and, and I see the increase in the assessments all the time. I've paid for bulkheads, as many others have already, I understand there's a lot that has to be done still with bulkheads, but take the necessary things, and cut down on everything a little bit. That's what I have to say.
Other public comments?
Joe Soloff here from 406 Ocean Parkway. I would just like to, there's a lot of discussion about the ditches and everything at the moment. I think, in, in my opinion, I think that each property owner should take care of their own area right out to the, right out to the street. The only maintenance that the public works should be doing is actually making sure that the ditch is down at the ground level that it should be so that the water flows. But as far as cutting and leaf raking, I personally believe that should be an individual property owner's responsibility, and stop wasting the time for public works to come around. I live on the parkway, I see that Batwing, Batwing Miller up and down the parkway looking for something to cut. Everybody within my eyestyle takes care of their own. I don't know about off the street, and the different neighborhoods, but it should be the same as the parkway. And, and I think it's their responsibility. I think everybody has, has discussed all these increases in this proposed budget, there's no point in beating a dead horse to death. I think they're all unconscionably high and irresponsibly put together. And as far as some of the other things go, I think that as a homeowners' association, what I would like to know is how many other homeowners' association has a public works department to the extent and size that we have. I believe our public works department is probably funded greater and has more equipment than probably Worcester County in general. I think, you know, for a community our size, two fire departments is probably more than many of the other towns of our size have within their corporate limits. The police department, Chief Massey, I think, came from a metropolitan police area, and I think he's trying to bring a homeowners' association, establish a metropolitan equivalent police department into a homeowners' association, which is the safest area in town. It's not necessarily because we have a certified police department, it's because just the neighborhood and the sense that we don't have that much crime. What we do have is some drugs, some, you know, drunken, disorderly type things, and some, I forget the name, it escapes me a minute, but household problems, if you would. But other than that, I don't think we need to become the equivalent of a metropolitan police department, fire department, or public works. They are, you know, they, they are funded by grants, and they have a lot of different funding opportunities to grow in a metropolitan area that we don't have as a homeowners' association. So what we're trying to do is establish metropolitan services out of our pockets that is not tax deductible when you figure out your taxes at the end of the year. Metropolitan areas, they can deduct those kind of fees. So I think there's a disparity, if you would, in trying to make a homeowners' association the equivalent of a metropolitan area without the benefits. And as far as, you know, the rest of the increases in here, I think are just out of, out of proportion. Like everybody says, we don't have any debt to the outside, we only owe ourselves. There's no reason that we have to assign $337,000 of that million-dollar deficit, we can do that over 10 years instead of three years. It's up to us, it's our own money. We're just taking it out of one pocket, putting it in the other. There's no rush to do that. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Other public comments?
I forgot to say something. I do thank you all for hearing all of us with our comments, and appreciate it. It was one lady who also said about the pushing, we're being pushed out. She said about new people coming in. With the amount of assessments and all the things that have to be done, some of us are going to be pushed out because we can't afford the big increases that we have. I know the necessary things like the police, they need some more room, understandable. The roads have to be taken care of. Just keep on with the absolute necessary things. Thank you.
Good morning, Brian Reynolds, 148 Ocean Parkway. My perception of the budget this year is that it seems like everything, including the kitchen sink, is in there this year. And I want to reiterate that we really should stick with our needs, there seems to be a lot of wants in there that could be postponed or put off until a later time when we take care of the things that we really need done. The payroll to me is a concern also, I don't get the, the pay differential thing where we're going to award 35 people with pay increases. To me, they should be getting pay increases based on merit or taking on additional responsibilities, and that's how you earn a raise, not just being awarded a, a pay increase because we're trying to align those jobs with, with other jobs in the area. I'd like to say that I'm confident that the board is going to find places where you can cut out some of this stuff, and that the increase in our, in our assessment is going to be a bit more reasonable. I'm sure that you're going to do that. Regarding the assessment, some people think we don't get much for our assessments, and I think one thing that we could do, and I've asked this of the board a couple times, give us something in the way of an assessment perk when we pay our assessment on time. I come pay my assessment, give me a couple rounds of golf, or give me a six-pack of pool passes, or give me a six-pack of tennis passes. That's not going to cost the, the association anything. It'll get people out using our amenities, maybe they'll like what they see and like what they do, and they'll come and buy an annual membership. It's just a way to increase activity at our amenities, and people will come to appreciate what we have here. Lastly, the forensic audit, what is going on with that? We haven't had any updates recently. Something went on there, let's find out what happened. We want to know. Maybe you guys already know, and you're not telling us, but let the association know what's going on there. We're spending money on it, we want to know. Lastly, thanks for being board members, it seems to me it's a thankless job, and we appreciate you being up there and doing the work for us. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Tom Terry, 401 Bluewater Court. I need to address the impression that was just given that we don't have to pay back dollars that we've overspent in a year because we don't owe it to a bank or somebody else. Jeff Nepper made a suggestion, which is absolutely correct, is we do not have an operations reserve savings account that allows us to pay for overspending or underspending of our budget. Part of that is, the old slush fund that everybody talks about, is if we have one. The reality is, we do not have an operational budget that allows us to pay this off. Now, I inherited, or actually, we had a $500,000 loss that was inherited by me when I became president. Five years, six years later, we had, as I said earlier, we got ourselves back into the black. So maybe the pain, it isn't over three years, maybe it is over five years, to where you pay yourself back. But I couldn't let stand the idea that we could just go every year and overspend operationally and have an operational deficit year after year after year, and act like we never have to make that up. The reality is, we don't have an operational fund that is available for us to buy new things from, which I think is a very good idea, nor do we have that fund available for us to pay off operational losses for a year. We don't have that. We have capital reserves, we have dues that are being paid in to pay for this year's or next year's dues when the dues are paid. So the idea that we don't have to pay this back, which was the impression that was given to the audience here today, is absolutely incorrect. Now the timeline to pay it off, maybe it's not three years, maybe it's five. We took five years to pay it off, but we made it. So, I just wanted to clear that up, because it's totally incorrect to say that we don't have to pay that. If that's the case, if that were the case, then why are we arguing? We could just overspend like crazy until we completely go completely out of, out of business. I mean, obviously, that makes no sense. So obviously, you can't have a debt of a, of a half a million, which I inherited, or actually, a little less than that, because Bill Rayco had knocked some of it off before I got there. But the reality is, the payback period could be longer, rather than three years, but please do not leave here thinking that we can just overspend every year and never have to pay it back. Even if it's paying ourselves, we've overspent our checkbook in a year, and that's what happened, and that's what happens, and you can't just act like you don't have that debt on the books. John, am I right?
Yes.
Yes, and we have to look at the reserves to make sure we have enough for everything else that needs to do, and in fact, that's what I'm just doing right here, and we have somebody that focuses on that, but correct. You have to look at your total reserves and see what that, I won't call it debt, but those losses and where it is, if, if it doesn't put you negative or not, and, yeah. And we do that, budget and finance does that.
Other public comments?
Hi, good morning. My name is Heather De Guzman. I moved here from Ohio last year, in about April. My concern is regarding real estate and my home, my home property value. I know that there's been a lot of discussion as to homes not being well-maintained, and that is concerning for me, especially moving from an area such as Ohio to here. I just wanted to know, what is the process that is being done for those homes that are not well-kept? A neighbor of mine was concerned, actually, a home that was next to me, I live at 54 Cape Town. I just wanted to know, what is the legal process in regard... I just wanted to know, what is the legal process in regards to that? Because I moved here thinking that I would be protected, because that is the purpose of a homeowners' association, is to protect the community. And so I feel as though my property value is not being protected. What is the process with that?
On the, we do have a staff that does inspections of property. And of course, with anything like this, you have to have the due process, process, where we notify the resident of violations of the covenants or the regulations. They have a certain timeframe, what is it, 10 days, 30 days, whatever, depending on what they need to do, to fix that. Then we give them a notice of violation, they have an opportunity to come before the architectural review committee, depending, again, they may give them a little more time or not. Ultimately, it gets referred to legal counsel, or it's brought to the board of directors, and then it's referred to legal counsel. They pursue their methods, including a notice of intent to lien, and it would come back before the board to firm that we want the law firm to lien the property, and then that lien is placed, and we go through the court process all along the way. What we do not have, and there's been a lot of discussion about this, is that we do not have an ability to find anybody.
You don't, you can't find anyone?
No, ma'am. That is not in our governing documents.
Okay.
And that's a frustration.
I understand this has been an ongoing issue, though, for years, for this particular home, to the point where it looks as though there's mold growing from the windows. To be honest with you, it's so bad.
And you're at 54 Cape Town?
I live at 54 Cape Town, so it's to the, so if you're looking at my house, it's to the right. So I just was really concerned that this has been going on for years, and this has been a known issue to the pines, and that nothing has been resolved. I understand everybody has hardships. I understand that there may be a reason financially as to why they're not able to maintain the home, but it sounds like this is a process that's been ongoing, and it should have been dealt with by now. So that is my concern with my property value, having a home like that.
Let me afterwards, so I can get a more way to get back to you.
Let me also address two other things. The ARC committee has made a recommendation of the board of directors at the last board meeting that we take a look at the governing documents to be able to be in a position to find. I mean, there's both good and bad in that, and you'd have to control it and all of that stuff, but to be able to find somebody for not keeping their property up. So that recommendation has come from ARC. The other thing that came from ARC was to either have a second full-time inspector or to add another part-time inspector so that every Saturday, we could have somebody driving around, because many of the other types of violations, cutting down excessive number of trees, doing work on weekends that has not been permitted or approved, occurs on the weekend, and we are, we currently, we're not staffed to be able to do that. So we're trying to address both of those issues going forward here to be able to potentially find, but more importantly, be able to inspect more frequently and address it and start to put it into the process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other public comments?
My name's Bill Sutherland. I'm 46 Penn Tail Drive. I've been the property owner here since 99. I'd like to address the problems that we're going to have with the bulkheads, the replacement bulkheads, are they being raised higher than the existing ones, or are they going to be left at the same height?
Currently, they're scheduled to be at the same height. We've received all of the information, everybody else has, and there's some disagreement as far as the rising tides over a period of time. But currently, under the bulkhead plan that's in place right now, and that can change at any time in the future, everything is being bid to replace it as is, as far as height goes.
Yeah, well, I feel that they should be raised higher, because anytime we go and we have a severe northeastern, there's a lot of properties here in the pines that the water is over the bulkhead. And the other thing I'd like to address is, do we have $14 million in the bank?
So when you look at the cash, and I, if you look-
Because if we do, there's no reason for any increase in the assessments.
Yes, sir. Well, I understand, and I wanted, I wanted, I wanted to address it.
Because if there's $14 million in there, that should be almost two years' worth of the expenses for Ocean Pines.
Okay, so-
There's approximately 8,000 homes or properties here-
Yes, sir.
-with an average of $1,000 each, if you want to take the waterfront properties and the off-water. That's approximately $8 million a year coming in. And if you can't run Ocean Pines on $8 million a year now, there's no reason, you know, that you can't.
So when you look at a balance sheet at any point in time, there will be a situation where you will have a lot of cash, or in this situation, that somebody brought up $14 million once you come out of the summer where you raise a lot of cash, but then for the next six months of that year, you use cash. And in that cash, that $14 million, if you look on the balance sheets at a point in time at the end of the year, during the winter, that we have to fund all the expenses, you don't have the $14 million, which is normal, you might have six, seven, eight million, or maybe even less. You have to fund your operations. So to look at it at a certain point in time, or when all the assessments comes in, that's not the best way. We do do, we do a schedule, a report, which we'd be glad to show you. We designed it for the finance lead that he prepares, and he'll show you on any given time how much cash we project to have, but you can't say $14 million.
How much cash is in the bank right now?
Yes, sir. How much, 14, 16?
I'm going to say, if we look at the report, it's like 10, 10-ish.
10-ish? 10-ish.
There's 10 million. In four more months, you're going to have another 8 million.
That's right, to fund the next, the next year. I can't take that, here's what I will offer, come to a budget and finance meeting, I'll go through everything with you, and so will the finance lead.
Well, all the grants that we used to get, that we're not getting anymore from the state and from the township, probably has to do with the amount of money that we go and we have in the bank. They're figuring, they're probably figuring, you got, they, Ocean Pines is rich, they got all this money, why should we give them any? Am I right? Yeah.
I don't know if somebody else wants to answer that.
But the other thing you have to remember is, when you look at that number, that number is made up of operating and reserves. Reserves are kept for replacement of capital items we have here. And, and let me go, because everybody talks about best practices. Let me read you what it talks about reserves. The treasurer must clearly understand, just-
Before you go, let me ask the question. Is the operating budget more than what you're taking in?
No. It's a balanced budget going forward.
Well, then why is it being raised $130, $127?
In order to get the work done. How do, how do you pay for drainage? How do you pay for deferred maintenance? You know, those-
You just told me that the, that the amount of money that's coming in every year is more than what's being paid out.
No, it's equal.
Why are we paying more? Why do we have to have an increase?
Well, we can, we can skip doing drainage, we can skip doing deferred maintenance, we can skip funding reserves for roads so that when we have $630,000 worth of pipes that have to be fixed, that can go on the assessment rather than come out of reserves. We can do all of that. I would suggest you come to a budget and finance committee meeting, they'll sit, John and his committee will sit and go through everything with you. But it's not as simple as it says. And I would ask everybody here, since I've got the mic for two seconds, how many people have actually gone online and read the budget and read the details of where everything is? Go online. You know, there's one, one or two or three people that have done that. Go online and actually look where it's being spent. And I have no problem cutting it, but remember, every time we cut something, and we're going to, we're going to make some changes to this budget, it affects services. So six months from now, when somebody is saying, I'll give you a perfect example, last year, we said, okay, we're going to cut some out of publications, we're not going to put out a summer, or whenever it was, newsletter. As soon as we said we weren't going out with the newsletter in the summer, that we cut in the budget, everybody went nuts and said, that's the number one thing we need. So there are a cause and effect. I'm not in disagreement with you that we can make cuts to this budget, and we will, but I'm also saying it's a little more complicated than just saying you have X number of dollars in the bank. You've really got to look at, where is the money being spent? And I think that's what a number of people in here said. Take a look at the budget, come to budget and finance, and look at it, because there's so much misinformation out here that if you start to really look, then you can make, the thing I like about this budget, this board, the seven people that'll be sitting here making the decision, have to definitively decide what we are doing and not doing. It won't be any hiding behind, the GM did this, the GM did that. It's the seven board members, and so we can stand on that. And so, I mean, I know that may not get you to where you want to get to, but I would suggest, come to a budget and finance committee meeting, and you can ask every question you want, and John, I believe, you can go through every single schedule we have.
Yeah, sir, I actually stood where you were years ago when I first came down, and I couldn't figure it out, and that's why I've done this and volunteered. I spend a lot of time with this board, they call, a lot of time with the BNF. I'd be more than glad and the team to go through it with you. There are good questions. We'd be glad, and anybody else that wants to come to BNF, we'd explain it.
Okay. And another thing that I liked to talk about was the, was the bulkheads again. Now, I've been here in the pines for 20 years, and in that 20-year period, I've noticed that the normal high tides on my bulkhead are at least six inches higher than what they were when I moved here. So any bulkhead replacement should be at the minimum of 18 inches higher than what the existing bulkheads are. That's about it. Thank you.
I just want us to pay attention to your comment, in all due respect, that the ultimate decision will be the board of directors. According to the HOA laws, it will be the board of directors and all the residents who care to participate.
Other public comments?
Hopefully, I'm the last one, right? Jerry Luter is a Brandlewood. Not that I don't support law enforcement, and I came, I retired from a federal law enforcement agency, and my daughter's a 911 dispatcher, but I really do think that Worcester County and Berlin need to fully pick up these services out of our taxes paid to those. And the HOA shouldn't be paying for any of that. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Other public comments? Okay, any questions from GM, my colleagues on the board?
Can I make a comment?
Please.
I would just like to say, particularly, the gentleman was talking about the bulkheads, it's not as simple as raising them two feet. You have to do a lot of work on your property, and you're also causing some water issues with the water that lands on your property if you start raising your bulkhead two feet. So I agree, we need to deal with that issue, but it's not as simple as just raising the bulkhead two feet. There's a lot more that's involved. If we really want to deal with the real hard issue with the rising tides, we need to jack everybody's house up about four or five feet, and I don't think we can afford that.
So in closing, I just wanted to thank everybody for their time today. Input on all of these important issues is very important to us. As is stated, we've still got some more work to do. We think there's adjustments that need to happen to this budget, but as Director Maroni pointed out, that's going to be the cost of some services that may or may not be able to get delivered. I think priorities is where we're looking at, what things need to be done, what are the highest priorities that we have to make sure we get done in the coming fiscal year, and what things can be pushed back because they're not at the same priority level, or they're not at the same importance level for a service offered to the members of the community. So more work's to be done, we've got a lot more discussions that'll be had before the 16th, and any and all additional comments that you may think about later on, please email them. We've gotten several, and it's a lot of thought-provoking things. There have been some ones that basically complained, but I'm more interested in the ones that we've received that complained and offered some alternatives for consideration. Those are very thought-provoking, and those kinds of things, we really, you know, take into, take into consideration. So any additional things that come up, please don't hesitate to email the directors as we go through our final discussions on this. I just thank everybody for their attendance today.